Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. It is Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. In accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, I am advising all those in attendance this evening that the meeting is being recorded by the Town of Oxford. In addition to the Town of Oxford, Robert King of 59 Corbog Ave. is recording the meeting this evening. We please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing on the agenda we have tonight is a public hearing, National Grid poll petition, request for one jointly owned poll on Dana Road. And at this time, I would like the representative from National Grid to come up and-
Do we have to open the public hearing?
Not yet, though, right? I don't have to open it up yet.
You can ask them and then-
Yeah, you can come up and make your presentation if you want. You're just asking, yeah, you can come up here.
Sir, I was ready here for you guys.
Get right in front of the camera.
Alrighty. So, it's a real simple petition poll for one poll on Dana Road, as you stated. It is to serve a new residence across the street from the proposed location of the poll, and just a single poll, like I said, just to serve that residence. That's it, overhead service.
All right, thank you. I just want to read into the record that the DPW Director, Jared Duvall, takes no exception to this poll, and he emailed that to us. So what I need to do now, this is probably the longest part of this, is I have to read the public hearing notice. Under the provision of the General Law of Massachusetts, Chapter 166, and any additions or amendments thereto, please be advised that at their meeting Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022, at 7:05 PM, the Oxford Board of Selectmen will consider a request to give Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, and Verizon New England Inc. to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Dana Road, National Grid, to install one JO poll on Dana Road beginning at a point approximately 100 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Hudson Road, install one new 40-foot Class II pole, 100P 70-50 on Dana Road, and install a new anchored guide wire, proposed P 70-50 pole, location approximately as shown on the plan attached. Therefore, it prays that after due notice and hearing, as provided by law, it be granted location for permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, marked Dana Road, Oxford, Massachusetts. Also, permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connection with such poles and buildings as each said petitioner's may desire for distributing purposes. Your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm at a suitable point on each of the said poles for the fire, police, telephone, and telegraph signal wires belonging to the municipality and used exclusively for municipal purposes. The petition can be found on the Board of Selectmen's webpage, www.oxfordmass.us/board-selectmen. If you have any questions, you may contact the Selectmen's office at 508-987-6038, Extension 6. So that is the public notice. At this time, I would like to open it up to any, anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Anyone willing to speak? Any comments, questions?
Vote.
All right, we're going to make a motion. I make a motion, well, let's call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five, any affirmative, no negative.
And no one wants to talk, so now we can close the-
Right, no one wants to talk, so at this time, I am going to close the public hearing.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. So the motion has been carried. Public hearing has been opened and closed. At this time, I will entertain a motion to grant the request for National Grid to put a poll on Dana Road.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Let the record show five, any affirmative, no negative. You've been granted.
Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you.
Will do. Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Selectmen. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Say cool.
Will do, you guys as well, especially Thursday.
Yeah. All right, next on the agenda, we have a request for change of name to the common vic license, Paul Branna, DBA Carl's Oxford Diner, 291 Main Street, Oxford to Carl's Oxford Diner Mr. Bremer's attorney's here tonight, Mark, if you want to come up and kind of tell us what's going on.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Mark Leire, represent Paul Bremer, who's the owner of Carl's Oxford Diner. This has been a sole proprietorship for more than 20 years. Mr. Bremer is getting to be a certain age and is looking at estate planning, and it's a lot easier to convey a business out of a corporation than it is out of an estate. So, the change that we contemplate is more in form, not in substance. Mr. Bremer will continue to be the 100% stockholder of the corporation, but it's to get it out of his name and get it into a corporate form, so it's easily transferable if anything should happen to him.
So what you're looking for us to do is to change it, let's see, the license to Paul Bremer, DBA Carl's Oxford Diner, to Arcs, to Arc, to-
To Carl's Oxford Diner.
To Carl's Oxford Diner, Inc.
Correct.
Is that, okay. I will make a motion, I will entertain a motion, and we do that.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five, any affirmative, no negative, change is granted.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you.
You, Mark. All right, the next thing on the agenda, we had some complaints filed a while ago, and I just want to read into the record, we have the Attorney General's Determination Regarding Open Meeting Law Complaints filed by Mr. Casey Fleming of 59 Corbog Avenue on September 16th, 2021. So we want to read into the record the decision that the Attorney General has made, and there's a couple of them. So to update the Board and residents, I want to let you know, the Board received determination from the Office of Attorney General dated July 21st, 2022, regarding the open meeting law complaint filed by Casey Fleming on September 16th, 2021, relating to an executive session held on August 4th, 2020, which contained three allegations. And the first allegation by Mr. Fleming was that the Board failed to perform the required procedures before convening an executive session. In regard to procedures for convening an executive session on August 4th, 2020, the Attorney General Determination states, "We decline to review these allegations as they are untimely." The second allegation by Mr. Fleming states, "The Board abused General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 1, Purpose Number 1." The Attorney General Determination states, "The Board did not abuse executive session Purpose 1, and we found no violation with respect to any of the above allegations." And the third allegation, "The minutes of the executive session are insufficient." The Attorney General's Determination states, "The minutes of the August 4th, 2020 executive session are sufficient." In conclusion, the Attorney General's Division of Open Government stated, "For the reasons stated above, we find the Board did not violate the open meeting law as alleged. We now consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved." And you want to understand, please understand, this is a brief summary of the determination letter which we received, which is quite lengthy. Anyone wishes to read the details of the determination can request a copy through the office of the town clerk. I'll find the whole document at the Attorney General's website at www.massgov.gov/ago opemeeting.com. And there was also a second hearing done, also filed by Mr. Casey Fleming. The Board has received a second determination from the Office of the Attorney General dated July 21st, 2022, regarding the open meeting law complaints filed by Casey Fleming on October 21st, 2021, January 3rd, 2021, and February 5th, 2022. Because the second and third complaint were filed to provide additional information with respect to the allegations in the first complaint, the latter stated they referred to the three complaints collectively as the complaint. The allegations were as follows. First allegation by Mr. Fleming, "The video recording of the Board's September 21st, 2021 meeting was deleted." The Attorney General's Determination states, "We decline to review the allegations that the recording of the September 21st, 2021 meeting was deleted. The open meeting law does not require the public body's video or audio record their meetings, nor does it govern retention of the video or audio recordings of the meetings or public body obligation to respond to requests for such a recording." Second allegation, according to Mr. Fleming, "The Board deliberated outside of a properly posted meeting regarding the town manager's annual evaluation and regarding the warrant for the October 6th, 2021 special town meeting. It was further alleged that the Board members' evaluation were provided to a non-member, the town manager, prior to the September 21st meeting. Even if true, this would not constitute a violation of the open meeting law." The Attorney General's Determination states, "Regarding the allegation of deliberation outside of a properly posted meeting regarding the town manager's contract, we find the Board did not violate the open meeting law by deliberating outside of a properly noticed meeting regarding the town manager's evaluation. In regard to the special town meeting and warrant articles, the Attorney General's Determination states, 'Absent sufficient evidence to the contrary, we credit a public body's account of the facts. There is every presumption in favor of the honesty and sufficiency of the motives actuating public offices and actions extensively taken for the general welfare. Therefore, we do not find that the Board violated the open meeting law with respect to the allegation that the Board deliberated outside of a properly noticed meeting.'" And the third and final allegation by Mr. Fleming, saying that the Chair, at the time, Mr. Dennis Lamash, habitually misuses the open meeting law to maintain secrecy rather than its purpose of eliminating secrecy. The Attorney General's Determination states, "With respect to the allegation that your Chair prohibited Mrs. Triano from speaking, asked her to leave the meeting, and then called the police to have her removed, we find no violation, and that the Chair did not violate the open meeting law when he asked Mrs. Triano to cease speaking, and even when he called the police to have her removed from the meeting after asking her to leave and warning her that he would call the police. With respect to the allegation that the Chair routinely failed to include topics on meeting notices that fellow Board members request to be included, we again find no violation. The Determination further states, 'The law does not require the Chair to add topics to a notice that are requested by fellow members of a public body.' In conclusion, the Attorney General's Division of Open Government stated, 'For the reasons stated above, we found that the Board did not violate the open meeting law as alleged. We now consider this complaint addressed by the termination, and it's been resolved.'" Again, please understand, this is a brief summary of the determination letter, which was quite lengthy. Anyone who wishes to read the details of the determination can request a copy through the office of the clerk, and we find the documentation, it also can be found at the Attorney General's website at www.mass.gov/ago opemeeting.com. And that concludes their, their decision.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we didn't cover the previous determination that came in on June 2nd. It just, it-
I haven't, I haven't got anything left from that yet, so I don't have it.
We received it in our, in our weekend packets two months ago, that determination.
I don't know, I don't know anything about that. We've got this determination, this is what I read, and if anybody has any issues or wants to take it up, they can contact the Attorney General's office and ask them, ask them that. Moving on. That's done. We're gonna, I'm gonna, there's someone that has to be here for the Purple Hot Proclamation. He's not going to be here until 7:30, so we are going to wait until he comes, so let's go on to the next one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I thought we were still on, are we on E or we went through E and F?
No, we're on G.
Okay. We're not having discussion on either?
On what?
On, on E or F? The, the two determinations?
No, there's no discussion. That's, I read into the record what the Attorney General's decision was. If anybody has an issue with their determination, you need to contact the Attorney General's office. No set? Okay?
If we can't have discussion, I guess so would be.
All right, next thing, appointment of Patricia Fedella as a tenant member to the Oxford Housing Authority. I don't know if she's here tonight, don't see her here.
She's not.
All right, so this is a request to appoint Patricia Fedella as a tenant member of the Oxford Housing Authority with a term to expire on June 30th, 2027. So I'm looking for a motion to appoint Patricia to the Oxford Housing Authority.
I will make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I'll vote yes. Let the record show five, any affirmative? No negative. Next, Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Event, requested by Rich Mazzola of New England Race Events, seeking permission for runners to run through the Town of Oxford on October 8th, 2022, and October 9th, 2022. And there's a letter requesting a map which is attached somewhere. Just for the record, I want people to know that Fire Chief McDonald and Police Chief Sad were contacted, and they have no issues with this result.
It's a letter from them, it's an email.
All right, I have an email from, from Mr. Mazzola. I'd like to read it into the record. "I hope your summer is going well." This is to Dee. "It's that time of year again, I am writing you to seek permission to run through the Town of Oxford as part of the Midstate Massive Ultra Trail Event that is scheduled on October 8th and 9th, 2022. This year's road is similar to last year's, except the Midstate Trail has now been re- permitted to continue down Levitt Road as in years past per the attached map. This means we will not be running Sacar Apple Road to Central Turnpike, which means we will not require a police detail. The anticipated approximately will be 250 to 300 runners, spread out over a six to eight hour period on October 9th. I've attached a copy of our 222 Runner Handbook, which describes our COVID precaution, which is in Section 6, as well as our medical response plan, which is in Section 9. The event has been sanctioned by the U.S. Track and Field Sanction Number 139803, and I will forward the insurance certificate to your attention once it has been received. Please let me know if you approve this request by replying to this message, as well as any questions you might have. Best regards, Richard Mazzola, New England Race Events." And he gives us his cell phone number. Thank you, Chairman. So I am looking for a motion to allow this event to take place on October 8th, 2022, and October 9th, on 2022, running through Oxford.
I will make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Let the record show five, any affirmative? No negative? Permission granted. All right, the next thing has to do, and I'm going to pass these out, as you know, a month ago, Town Council came before us.
Why not to uncut?
Huh?
Where are we? Tomorrow was?
Jay, we just finished that one, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped. Go ahead.
Okay.
My bad.
Thank you, Ms. Vice Chairman.
My bad.
Keeping me honest. I'm going to pass out, these are the goals that we've come up with. I would also like to thank the Board for their cooperation. I think everybody's goals were very well placed, they were on time, and as part of the process, I met with Town Council, as what the process is supposed to, oh, would you like to see? And we've come up with a summary, we've come up with goals that I think reflect input from all of us. I was happy to see that many of us had the same goals to a certain extent, it might have been worded differently. So what I'd like to do is read this into the minutes, we'll take a five-minute recess so we can review them, and then we'll go from there.
Do you have everything?
Yeah, everybody's got one, right?
Yep.
Yep. Two pages.
I think Dee has something else.
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to give one to Dee, Tim? Share it with Tim.
I'll trade you, I have a note on mine already.
No, no, she, I think she wrote something to talk about, the attorney.
Oh, yes, let me read this, thank you, Dee. I want to read this into the record. "Annually, the Board, with the input of Town Managers, shall define the goals and objectives which determines necessary for the proper operation of the Town and the attainment of the Board's policy objectives, and shall further establish a general priority among those various goals and objectives, said goals and objectives to reproduce in writing. They shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified and with annual operating and capital budgets and appropriations provided by the Town and the events that have occurred during the year. Goals should be finalized by July 1st of each year, provided the failure to meet this deadline shall not constitute a breach of the contract. The Board shall review and evaluate the Town Manager every year and in the spring prior to Town Meeting. Said review and evaluation shall be based on the goals and objectives established pursuant Section 5A. As the Board is aware, at previous meetings, we had Labor Council review with us the process of establishing goals with the Town Manager. Based on Attorney Mark Terry's recommendation, I have requested all the Board members to submit by July 19th what they recommend individual goals for the Town Manager would be. After receiving all individual recommendations, I reviewed them to look for similarities and common things articulated by each of you, and use such information to summarize into three general goals with several objective areas under each for the three goals. I then shared this with Attorney Terry, who reviewed them in the context of what all the members had individually submitted. The both of us then discussed them with the Town Manager and collaborated with her to help better define some of the key objectives under each of these goals. In summary, the three goals the majority of us had in common are highlighted in the blue along the general objectives and including the following. One, improve town communications and enhance community engagement. Number two, address infrastructure issues. Number three, enhance economic development. Under each of these goals, I had developed several objectives which are also highlighted in blue. After sharing all of this with the Manager, she discussed with us and submitted more definitive objectives related to each of the more broad objectives which are denoted in the black text. We shall now stand a five-minute recess in order for the Board to read this document, will then return, and I will entertain a motion to vote to approve the goals and objectives as written." So I think at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess so everybody can review them, take a look at them, and then we'll reconvene to, to vote on them, okay? Record, I would like to review the goals so the public can know what we're looking at here. So goal number one is to improve town communication to enhance community engagement, and under that, there are five subdivisions. One would be update website, make it user-friendly. We want to solicit the community user input about town websites and retain professional services to redesign website with more user-friendly improvements. We want advisory committee, establish stakeholders, stakeholder groups to assist features of other municipal websites and evaluate professional recommended changes. C, we want notifying public regarding town meetings, elections, and special forums, et cetera. Utilize a variety of communication methods to notify public regarding town meetings, elections, and special forums, et cetera. Also recruit citizens for boards, committees, and other committee opportunities. Utilize a variety of communication methods to recruit citizens to serve on boards and committees. The next goal would be address infrastructure issues. We would, number A, letter A, would be pavement management program. Update pavement management plan using three-year projections and publish anticipated projects. B would be maintain road, bridges, dams, buildings, and parks, et cetera. Supplement neighborhood paving projects using winter recovery assistance grant funds. C, capital investment plan, we're looking for a five-year plan, which we have now, we need to continue that. Implement new project management methods to improve tracking and better manage projects of the five-year capital improvement plan. Letter D, continue to fund capital projects by the levy, by free cash and grants. Continue to diversify funding for capital projects using a combination of levy, free cash, and grant sources. Number three, enhance economic development. More commercial revenue, less residential taxes. Cultivate prospective developers to establish new operations in such key businesses, areas as marijuana retail, manufacturing, battery energy storage system, distribution, and small retail. Letter B, grant money to assist existing businesses. Develop and administer a new micro grant storefront enhancement program for Oxford businesses and host Connect Oxford Job Fair in partnership with local businesses. C, zoning and bylaw changes to attract more new business to Town. Pursue designation of 43D expedited permitting and mass bio designation upgrade to improve marketing potential of vacant commercial properties. And last but not least, cut red tape by shortening the permitting process. Improve efficiency in processing permit application by implementing new customer focus online permit software for all inspection services. So I am looking right now for a motion to accept these goals for the Town Manager for the upcoming year.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Seems like an awful lot. And it, you know-
You know, some of the stuff in here, I mean, are we expecting her to achieve this in this year? Is that the, you know?
I think what we would be looking for is to have her make significant progress, understanding that some of these are going to be ongoing things. Remember, there's three goals here, and I did go over this with Jen. These are suggestions on what she might have to do to achieve these goals, okay? That's the way I looked at it. Would you want to comment on that?
No, yes, I mean, I do believe that I would like more of a measurable metric. And I have, you know, discussed with the chairman and with our town council that, you know, using those three broad goals, and remember, the chairman came up with everything in blue, that was not me. So just updating the website, make it user-friendly, I decided that I thought it was good to put in a measurable goal to say to solicit community user input about the town website. You know, I'll determine how that gets down. Obviously, I'll share that with the board as it goes along, because I want you to know what I'm actually doing to attain that objective. And that would include retaining, you know, professional services to redesign the website for more user-friendly improvements. Same thing with the advisory committee. That was, I didn't, you know, I took that as advisory committee related to the communications for the municipal website. And, you know, we will establish a stakeholder group, and I will put some community people on that. So it's providing the context, and I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that's actually a helpful thing. I think in the past, we've had board members that even though the board hadn't voted in totality to agree what the major goals were, I could see, you know, the individual goals that were listed on evaluations, and I would strive to meet every single one of those. And sometimes despite meeting those that they articulated, it left like this nebulous area that, okay, well, fine, you did those, but we're just going to evaluate you on something else. And that's what I don't want to have happen, you know? And if the board can agree, then, you know, obviously, there's a lot of goals that get taken, you know, very to heart as a manager to make, you know, the town function and to make improvements. And that, I would not want, you know, something more than what I think we have. It's not to say that I don't have a lot of management goals. I think I share them every single meeting. But, you know, understanding that you're trying to come together as a board as well, I think this provides pretty good context.
We tried also, Dennis and the other board members, that we do have things that are measurable. For example, we want to address infrastructure. So one of the things Jen has to do, she needs to update our management pavement manager program, you know, coming up with a three-year projection. So the measurement is when she comes in and says, here's my three-year plan, this is what we hope to accomplish. So that's measurable, and that helps her meet the goal. You know, supplement paving projects using winter recovery assistance. She can do that. That's something we could say, did you do that or you didn't? So we didn't want to get too specific.
Can she really do that, though? I'm sorry.
No, no, actually, that is going to be coming up.
Yeah, winter is, doesn't end until like February, March, and then her reviews like April, May, so there wouldn't really be any paving project done in that month.
Well, no, it has to do with the allocating of the money.
Yeah, that actually is a grant that recently we obtained. And it's a one-time grant that the legislature added to our overall state funding. So we normally get chapter 90, but this was a unique time. So they actually targeted money. It's going to be over 300,000. And I've already been, you know, starting to meet, because construction time is now, with Jared, our DPW director, to talk about where we think those neighborhood streets are most important. So that is a measurable objective, and it is something that we can achieve. People might say, well, we have a pavement management plan, even though the chairman came up with that. That pavement management plan actually does need to be updated. It was a five-year plan that was put together by our previous DPW director. And so that will be something that, you know, management-wise, the administrative team will work together to update and, you know, also to articulate and communicate that with the public and the board and the like. It'll guide us as we go forward.
What I tried to do, like several of us had put down improving the roads, so that's part of the infrastructure thing, and that's, that letter A specifically deals with trying to improve or pick up the pace for what we're going to, you know, improve our roads. So I took all of that into consideration, so. Any other comments, Robert?
Yes, so to selectmen Lamarche's point, a lot of these are already kind of in process. And I don't have a problem with giving the manager credit for some of the work that's been going on. You know, I think that's totally appropriate. So like, for example, battery energy storage systems, I believe we already have an interested party.
We have one, yes.
Yeah, you know, so a lot of this stuff is kind of already stuff that the, I think the town administration has actually been working on.
If I can. We just passed a zoning bylaw change, right, to add to the table of use. We did that purposely as a management directive to allow the town to help shape what could be an interested party. The thing about this now is to execute that is a lot more different and to then guide the town for something like this. The town had a past history of working even with solar developers before having a bylaw in place and not being able to really shape what they wanted and expected from those companies. So there is a lot more work contextually. It's not just a matter of they apply and then we'll be fine. I would venture to say this is a unique business, and it's a business that, yes, as a manager, working with my director for planning and economic development, it was our idea to put this together so that we can make sure that we have some control over what a business of that size and magnitude would mean for this community. So it's not just a trivial thing to say, and I'm not saying you're saying that, that we want to just give credit to things that are already there. Goals should be about what's actually happening. It shouldn't be just about pie in the sky, and it should be, I know, a difficult task for five people to try to come together and come up with something, but there's, I think there's meaning behind that, and it's not just what's in progress. I would hope that after guiding the town for four years in a very positive way, that we would want to continue those kinds of things. And I think I have a pretty good understanding of how much work that will be, but I also think this will allow me to come back to the board and say, okay, I want to give you a heads-up about this particular business, and this is what we're doing. That's different than, you know, a lot of the other businesses that I may not, because we're not the planning board, to bring before the board. But if it's a goal for me, I'd want to share that information with this board.
Okay. Thank you. So speaking to what the manager had said earlier about making the objectives specific, what I would like, you know, speaking for myself, would be to kind of have more numbers attached to this, you know, and just, you know, so, because, for example, if the manager got like $1 for something, and I'm not saying that that's the intent, of course, but, you know, so that we can kind of fairly say that, you know, we're setting a goal that, I'm trying to think of a way to, proper way to put it, a goal with a metric that isn't kind of spongy and kind of ambiguous. You know, like, so for example, with improving the town website, you know, my feedback to you, Mr. Chairman, was that we should have a metric for traffic. Anybody who has a website has those sorts of things, and it's a way of kind of evaluating in an objective way how effective your different initiatives are, because you can do something as simple as like when we put out the newsletter and have links to certain things on the website and then evaluate, well, was that effective? Did people respond to that? Did they follow through to go to those different pages on the website so we know that it was effective? And so my aspiration for these goals would be that, you know, we're evaluating numerically with each of these things, you know, as far as like the investments in the roads. You know, the manager brought up, I think the manager said maybe $300,000 of grants. I would like for us to consider setting a dollar value for how much additional revenue that we'd like to have allocated for capital towards the roads, so that we can say the manager definitely got this. It's not that, oh, the roads were paved.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think you have to be careful on how much you really want to manage and how much you want to, you know, create, whether you want to call it a metric or not. You, as a board, don't get to decide the metric as much as the townspeople do. We vote on a capital plan, and we already have, to the tune of 1.5 million dollars. How that gets allocated, also, we articulate to town meeting, we articulate it ahead of time to the finance committee. Assigning a metric to grant money, $19 million in four years is a huge metric that I would dare say that not many managers anywhere could hold that. That's not something is necessarily is always going to be sustainable. It's something that if I want to put down things that I absolutely know, that's one thing, but to have this board come up with a metric on grant funding when you've maybe perhaps never written a grant or understand how that might be fluid, I think, you know, I can certainly track that and let you know, like I have been. I've actually articulated in our newsletter the response of how much grant money we have had. We have not had a debt exclusion or an override to pay for all this additional infrastructure that's not even put on to the townspeople to actually vote on. Do I want to assign a monetary figure to that? No, because I think I'd rather be able to come to you and say, yes, we've been successful here, yes, we've been successful there. I cannot guarantee you that every grant we put in, we're going to have an actual funding revenue source. We have a unique time period right now where winter recovery, which is not even an assistance program that since my four years, we've ever gotten money for, because it's not even a grant program. It became a grant program through the executive office. So do I expect that next year? No. So I wouldn't want us to get hopeful that that will happen. I know those kinds of things because I've served at a higher level in government, and so, I mean, as far as what I think you can get from me, is that I will certainly attach indicators where I can prove what I have done. And I would say that I will continue to do that. And I would want to make sure this board knows what we've been able to deliver as administrative team. So I think you could, should have confidence that that's going to happen, because it certainly has happened without the board collectively defining the goals all of this time.
Yeah, one of the town councils said, we have to be realistic. And remember, he said we can go be very specific, we can be very general, and we're kind of in the middle here. And just to go what Jen's saying, I think that the, underneath each goal, we've put these sort of like benchmarks or things that she would really need to do to help her achieve those. So if at the end of the year, we haven't had, we don't have an advisory committee, well, then she didn't really do that part of the goal, as far as I'm concerned. If at the end of the year, we don't have a three-year management program and with a list of projects that we're going to have, then she didn't meet that goal. You know, we need money to do bridges and the dams and stuff like that. Again, if none of those things are dealt with, then she didn't make her, didn't meet the goal. Again, we can't be too specific, but we can't be too general. So I think by putting it this way, it gives her a little bit of leeway, but it also lets us know, you know, whether or not she's met that initial request. So that's just my take on it.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could continue.
Yes, you can.
So what I meant by those numbers, and you may recall from my submission, I recognize that, you know, we can't guarantee what town meeting would approve. My aspiration would be to ask the town manager to come up with the plan. You know, this is how I think that we could, within the levy, come up with a certain amount of extra funding. You know, these are the, because, you know, budgets are about priorities, and, you know, sometimes maybe where at this table, our priorities don't necessarily reflect the priorities of all the people in the community. And so this, you know, for me personally, if the manager presented the plan, well, now it's up to town meeting. You know, we don't control town meeting.
I actually present, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you do.
One second.
Yeah, go ahead.
The budget year that we're in right now, that she'll be evaluated on, has already been voted on at town meeting.
Right.
So.
Could I please finish, Mr. Chairman?
Well, she had a comment. Are you done, Amy?
Yeah, I guess so.
So what I said was presenting the plan. So it would be a plan for next year's budget, because obviously, the town manager couldn't possibly be responsible for allocation of funds for a budget that's already passed.
So, Mr. Chairman, I present a plan to the finance committee. This is not the finance committee. Again, I think you have to remind yourself of staying in your lane. If you really want to talk about the actual overall financial plan that I present, I do it as a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee annually. It's at that point in time that I do that collectively with all of the department heads, and we do it based on our financial forecasts and also what our needs are. So that is already happening. If you haven't seen that, then there's nothing in a goal that I would even have ever agreed to, because you obviously don't see that plan. It is a plan. It's a very in-depth financial plan. It's a financial plan related to how many people we're going to hire. It's a financial plan on the priorities of departments. It's a financial plan related to the programs and services that we might increase or we might diminish. All of that gets put out. So I don't understand what more you want in terms of a plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I could continue. So, you know, what I had submitted was the idea, and not to say that the manager doesn't present a plan, of course, the manager submits a plan. My vision was that we, as the board, setting policy, would give the manager direction about, you know, in general, what we would like to, what direction we would like to see the manager's financial plan that's presented go. And so in that theme, allocating more of the levy towards roadwork than we currently are.
But that's not up, that's not up to our purview to do that.
Well, we're setting the policy of the town.
That's her job in finance committee. I think we need to get overall, our objective is we want to put more money into the roads, okay? But at the same time, we want to fund dams, the buildings, and all this other stuff. That's where it goes to her and the finance committee. That's up to them to do that. We've suggested to her that we want, we would like to see more money put towards the roads and the infrastructure, okay? That's our job, that's our goal. Whatever she does after that is up to her and the finance committee. We have to stay in our own lane. We have to be very careful about that. So I think that the goals that we put certainly bring that to the forefront. I think if these goals are met, I think a number of people in the town would be very happy, because we have all heard, we want to improve communication. That's a general goal that we have set for the town manager. We've given her a few ideas on how she can achieve that. Now it's up to her to make that happen. As far as getting involved in the budget, and we'll say this again, we can give our opinion at a certain point, but it's the finance committee, it's the department heads, and it's the town manager that set that, not us.
Finance manager.
Right. Do you have something?
And the finance manager, Katie. And Hancock team.
So I'll just, I'll finish up, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we can agree to disagree about what the appropriateness of this body is in setting town policy. You know, I obviously have one view, you have another, and I respect your view. And the last thing I'd like to say about, and that's not to say that these are terrible goals, you know, there's a lot of things here that I think that many people will be happy, you know, that they're accomplished. The town manager had made a reference to kind of keeping the board updated throughout the year on the progress. I would respectfully ask you, Mr. Chairman, if we could consider scheduling a specific date to kind of review all of the goals before we are tasked with doing our reviews. That way, the town manager has an opportunity to kind of refresh our memory and kind of go down the list and be like, quickly, these are all the things I've done to address these goals.
Well, if you listen, every time there's a town manager report, we're told about all the good things that are going on, about the grants that we got, and about the other things that are going on. So I do think on a regular basis, we are told what is going on and what improvements are being made. If once in a while, Jen, you want to give us an update and tell us that you've formed an advisory committee to look into improving the town website, I think that would be helpful. I mean, that would be the kind of thing that I would be looking for. You know, on a weekly, or every time she gives a report, if she's responded to something, if we got a grant for some roads, let us know about it. Like I say, if you've, if you've, you know, if you've worked with a company and we have a solar farm coming in with a battery-type thing, keep us updated on that, and I think you do that on a regular basis. So I don't know if we have to have a special meeting regarding that. I mean, that's something we could consider, but I do think that we do get reports on a regular basis as to the progress that's being made on a number of areas in the town. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, I don't at all disagree with that. It's, so my perspective, so I watch many meetings, and I did before I was a member, but many members of the public aren't tuning in every night. And so, you know, if they wanted to know about what happened with one specific, you know, objective, it can be very burdensome for them to have to go through all the notices for all the meetings across the year to find those things. My My, my recommendation to you, and obviously it's, it's your judgment, but my recommendation would be that we, that we do it as, it's as much for the public as it is for us, so that when those, those two things are close together, people can kind of see. And if, and if you feel it's too burdensome to go over all in a meeting, I think a written submission from the manager is totally appropriate.
Can I just, I'm sorry. Robert, finish.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Robert, finish.
You know, so it's, you know, it's, it's about kind of putting the two things together, you know, and I personally think that we probably, in my opinion, have the time to do that.
Well.
Can I just say something real quick?
Yes, you can.
It's in April, so can we maybe talk about that in March or February? Like, her review isn't until next year, so I don't know why we're going to.
Well, because this is just an, I mean, it's on topic with what we're discussing.
I understand that, but I mean, if we say something tonight, we might not even remember in January that we're going to do that.
One other thing I want to comment on, too. Remember, and you're talking about communication, the first goal, improve town communication to enhance community engagement. And that's the whole point of this. So I would think that part of that, whatever way that we're going to correspond to people, I don't think there's a problem with putting in some of the updates if that's what we decide to do. Again, these are general goals that we have set, and we've got a little bit of detail on it. So I, I think, to be honest with you, you brought out some good points. I think we are addressing them to a certain point, maybe not to the detail that you want. You're not, what you're asked for is not unreasonable. I think a lot of those things will be done in this particular set of goals that we have. That's my opinion on it.
May I, may I, sorry, are you done?
Oh, go ahead.
Tim.
So I, I understand what everybody's trying to say here. You know, in, in my research, since we discussed in the past, or it's been about a month now since we discussed it, I started looking at other towns and what they were doing. So they, they have very specific guidelines and goals, and there's a format in which it's presented, and there seems to be a, I understand the timeline that we're on now, we're a little late on this. But even with that, there seems to be a significant amount more goals and a lot more detail with other towns. I'm, I'm just unsure, some of this is great, I just think it needs, you know, room to expand on. I think it needs a little bit more detail, you know.
Well, I think every town does things differently. We would tend to that some, and I'll add, because one town, it has seventy-four goals for their town manager.
It's impressive.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, and even they said it.
Yeah, it's insane.
I mean, that's like, you know.
Is that a testament that it doesn't need to be exactly met?
There are towns, if you remember, Town Manager, the Town Council, told us this is a process that is used by many towns throughout the state of Massachusetts, and that most towns go with three or four goals. Does that mean there are towns out there that don't have seventy-four or seventy-five goals that are much more detailed? I think there are some, but I think there are fewer farther between. And I could, I think you're setting up your town manager to be unsuccessful, because nobody's going to meet seventy-four goals in one year with the amount of work that has to be done.
I, I don't think that's the point.
So my, my take on this is that we've got three good goals here. They're wide range, there's a lot of things that have to be done to meet these goals. We have the approval of Town Council on this, and I think we should go with the goals that we got. And next year is another year we can always improve on. Remember, this is the first time we've gone through this, okay? And I think that, as I said before, I think if these goals are met over the next year or so, are well on their way of being met, the townspeople are going to be very happy with this. And I think they're realistic, I think they're attainable, and I think that there's a lot of work that the town manager, not only her, but the staff is going to have to do to achieve these goals that we've got now. So that's my take.
I, I feel like the majority of this was, was in the Oxford Newsletter, and like Selectman King said, it's already being worked on. I just don't see anything.
Well, I would hope that some of it is being worked on.
I mean, really.
I mean, really, I mean, really, if we're not, if we're not working on any of these now, we've got real problems, all right? What we want to do is expand on them and bring in new things. There's nothing in the book right now about improving community communications here. That's a whole brand-new thing. We're talking about, she's looking to get money for existing businesses. There's nothing in the program about that. So it has to be a combination of what we're working now, continue to do that. We have a five-year capital investment program. We need to expand that by working more on bridges, by getting levies, by getting grants and things like that. So we just can't stop doing that. That's something that we need to continue, because the amount of money we're saving on fixing our dams and fixing our schools, that money that we're saving by getting those grants, we can put towards the roads. So, you know.
I'm not disputing that.
I think the statement to say we're only doing what we're already doing, I don't think that's really an accurate statement. Part of it is, but.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may offer some insight, having been a trained certified facilitator and quality improvement person, I do understand wanting to have goals that are attainable, measurable, but also meaningful. I could just focus on these, and I think the town would be very sad to know that that's all I'm going to focus on as a manager, because there are many, many goals and many managerial objectives that get set every day that have nothing to do with this board, but have to do with this town. The board never gave me a directive to put together and try to brand onward Oxford in a variety of different ways. Some people liked it, some people don't like it, but that's what a manager does. You actually have to make decisions and you move the town forward. Someday, you may have another manager who may not want to do that. And, and, you know, absent, you know, a major declarative for measurement, you know, from this board, you're going to get a different set of priorities, and that's what happens. So, I mean, there is an awful lot that happens every single day that is not contained here, that is not policy-related, but is more procedural and statutory, statutorily and compliance-related. So these things don't encompass all of that. They encompass a fraction of it, based on what, you know, you kind of all submitted. So I, you know, I do give the chairman credit for trying to pull together divergent opinions. And remember, Town Council saw those individual goals and thought, actually, that he had done a good job, and that was before I even saw them, that he felt that he had done a good job in trying to encapsulate that. You know, the goal here is not to have every goal and objective under the sun. If, if you want that, then you've got to go to a town where you don't have a town manager, and you guys are actually defining the budget, and you're hiring people and doing all of that. So, you know, if you want that, then you might have to quit your day job because it's a lot of work. And we don't have that form of government here. And so until that changes, there is a lot of objectives, there's a lot of goals that aren't even contained in here. And, and, but it's not for this board to have to, to manage, and, but it is an expectation, you know, that I have as a manager to actually continue to move the community forward.
Just as a side note, just so, you know, Town Council was very impressed on the fact that we had a lot of things in common, the five of us. I know some of us had our own little individual things, and they're all, they're all, they're not all going to make it, but he said, wow, I'm looking at this, and you guys seem to be pretty much on the same page generally. So I know we're having a little disagreement here, but I, I think, you know, when someone outside makes a statement like that, that, you know, you five are pretty much in tune, you know, there were three or four things that we all had, and some of us were a little more specific than others, but if you look at it, we included in the overall goal. So I don't want this to turn into a little, you know, he said, she said. I think we did, I got to be honest with you, I think the board did a terrific job, and your goals were, were spot-on for the most part, and we are addressing the needs that, you know, the citizens have brought up repeatedly. So I don't want this to turn into something that's confrontational, because it certainly shouldn't be that way. We did a good job, and everybody got their goals in on time, and I'm going to invent a new word, commonality, I guess if that's such a word. There was a lot of commonality in what we had. So I, I don't want this, people to think that we're in disagreement, that the board is, because we're not, we're not. We do, we did agree on a lot of this stuff, so that's my take. Yes, Robert?
Yes, and I thank you for kind of you, to you and the manager. I probably should have prefaced my statement, you know, before I spoke by recognizing that obviously you put a lot of work into this. I know that what I submitted was pretty large, so you had to go through all that, and you had to do that five times. And kind of along with what the manager was saying as far as goals, I always encourage residents to read through the GFOA budget, because when you go through every department, each department head has goals, you know, for the year that they're seeking to accomplish. You know, so there's, there's, I, I think it is important to recognize that there is a lot going on, and that doesn't necessarily reach out into the community, that people find that out. And I don't want you to, to the extent I don't support this, it's just that I would want more specificity. It's not that I disagree.
I understand.
With your selection, Mr. Chairman.
And I appreciate your comments. Thank you.
I, I kind of like the second we said, like I said, there's a lot of good stuff in here, there's, I think just, there's a room for expansion on some of them, not everything. You know, a lot of my stuff that I had said was in there, I just, I just think it's lacking the details that I presented.
Okay.
And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dennis, you all set?
Yeah.
You said what you had to say.
I'm good, thank you.
Well, I'd like to call for the vote if there's no further discussion. Everybody all set to vote?
Yep.
All right, go ahead, Amy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could I make one last comment?
Yes, you can.
I apologize.
No.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would also like to point out to the public that, in my opinion as a selectman, is that regardless of whether I personally support the goals that we vote on, I do feel bound to evaluate the manager based on those goals. And so I don't want there to be a misunderstanding in the public that, you know, if I don't vote for this, that, you know, that that goes into my factor, you know, in the spring when I'm evaluating the manager. I had to evaluate the manager on the goals that passed this vote.
Okay. I appreciate that, and a point well taken. Thank you. All right, let's call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. Let the motions, let the results show that three approve the goals, and we wish the town manager a lot of luck and staff in achieving these goals. And I'm sure that all of us, whether how we voted or not, will be behind you and supporting you in trying to achieve these goals, because it will benefit the entire community. And I do thank the board for their input and their cooperation. And finally, we have goals. Thank you. All right.
Who's coming next?
Come on up.
Oh, we're going backwards.
No, whoa.
I forgot. Got to keep me, you have to keep me in line here.
G.
G. You can sit down and relax if you want.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Take a load off.
There's a podium, that's why I was looking for the podium all over the place.
So we have a Purple Heart proclamation. I'm going to read a proclamation, and this has to do with the Oxford Veterans Agent. David Adams will be present to accept the proclamation on behalf of the town of Oxford, Purple Heart recipients. And I would like to read the proclamation. Proclamation. I've done an awful lot of reading.
You've done a lot of reading.
I'm going to start.
You're doing all right.
Dumping some of this on you.
I don't know.
You got to earn your keep.
I don't know, I don't know how to read.
All right. Whereas, our nation and its principles have been defended throughout history by brave and patriotic men and women who willingly sacrificed their own well-being for the cause of freedom and democracy. Whereas, the people of the town of Oxford, Mass. have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly preserved their country and this community in the armed forces. And veterans have earned profound and eternal gratitude for their willingness to risk life and limb for the sake of our town and nation, its people, and our cherished freedoms. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from Oxford who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, our community has a proud traditional, tradition of military service, and many of our citizens have earned the Purple Heart Medal as a result of being wounded while engaged in combat with an enemy force which is constructed, construed as singularly meritius, meritorious act of essential service. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Oxford Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2022, Purple Heart Day in the town of Oxford, Massachusetts, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation and townsmen and women in uniform that were wounded or killed by the enemy while serving to protect the freedom enjoyed by all Americans. And it's signed by all five members of our board. So that's our proclamation. I'd like to present this to you. Want to go take a picture or?
I don't have a thing, but, you know, yeah, I think we did.
Guys, why don't we go up and.
Before we dressed here.
Get in there, you're all pressed up, you're going to get fitted today.
He's all dolled up.
Nice, very nice.
My uncle Dwight was a PS, was one of the ones who got the Purple Heart.
God bless him. We thank him for his service. Come on over here.
Thanks so much.
You got it?
Check me.
All right, there you go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
He served under Patton.
Patton, ah, okay. There you go. Yeah, you hold him.
And he was injured on Normandy Beach.
God bless him.
Follow him there for a second.
Yeah, smile pretty. Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We appreciate it. Thank you, very proud of you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for serving. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
I was wondering if we could get PS Square named after him. Maybe a plus spot on Main Street. That would be nice. His family would be so delighted. And mine.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to point out, our operations manager for the DPW, Steve Esposito, had called me yesterday to inform me that they will be lighting up the town hall cupola in purple on August 7th. They've done that a number of times, and it is, I call it the Esposito Brothers always are fondly making sure that we, we do acknowledge that. So when you're driving by the town hall in the evening, take a look, and you'll see it'll be lit up all purple.
Thank you, folks. We appreciate it.
I don't know whose idea it was, but it's excellent.
It was mine. No, I'm only kidding.
He takes credit for everything.
It's a good idea, it was mine. Wasn't, it was Amy's. All right, moving right along, I think we're on letter K, right? Request to use the Jarsland Park bandstand for backpack giveaway on August 13th, 2022 by Jay Rizzuto on behalf of the Cornerstone Bible Baptist Church on 61 Charlton Street, Oxford, Mass. And they are requesting that the board give permission to use Jarsland Park bandstand on that date from 12:30 to 3:00 for the purpose of backpack giveaway. Application is attached. OCC Director Shelley Lambert has indicated that the bandstand is available for the date and time of request. So I'm looking for a motion to grant them their request to use the bandstand on August 13th.
I will make that motion.
Second. We have a double second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Square.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Park Bandstand on that date from 12:30 to 3:00 for the purpose of backpack giveaway. Application is attached. OCC Director Shelley Lambert has indicated that the bandstand is available for the date and time of request. So, I'm looking for a motion to grant them their request to use the bandstand on August 13.
I will make that motion.
Second. We have a double second. Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cor.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Amy?
Yes.
Yes. Robert? Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Five in the affirmative. Permission granted. All right, we got a little inflation thing here. Has to do with an IRS mileage reimbursement rate change. This request is asking the board to approve the newly revised mileage rate for travel from the IRS for the period of July 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022, to 62.5 cents per mile. I'm looking for a motion to grant that.
I will make that motion.
I will second that motion. Okay. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Too bad for you.
No, because we went after.
You used your car last week, right, Robert? She's good. You only got the 50 cents a mile.
I think this applies to the current year, doesn't it?
Probably, yeah. It does. July 1st.
Yeah.
All right, so he saved you. All right. Next one. Discussion on possible vote regarding an application to allow keynote to the Oxford VFW post 563. I don't know if I have to read anything into this, right? We just wanna have a vote to grant the VFW permission to allow keynote at post number 5663. Pleasure of the board.
We only have to vote if you don't want the state to.
Okay, so do we not want to vote? Yeah, that's fine to me. It's fine to me.
I would like it.
All set, Tim?
I don't have a problem with it.
No vote. Next is the approval of the meeting minutes dated July 5, 2022, and July 19, 2022. Pleasure of the board. I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
I would make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to state for the record, I had some corrections, but unfortunately, I had some technology issues, and I lost them and didn't have time, so I'll be abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Robert. I'll call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
Tim?
Yes.
I vote yes. Let the record show four in the affirmative, one abstention. Motion passes. And now, Jen, it's all up to you.
Well, speaking of grants, I get to start our town manager report, making another announcement. At previous board meetings, I've spoken about the important management goal that the DPW Director Jared Duval and I set, which was to participate more fully in the Mass DOT Complete Streets program. Last September, we took steps to pursue and successfully obtain a $37,000 grant to establish a Tier One prioritization listing of Oxford roads based on complete streets criteria. Using this information, we applied for a Tier Three Complete Streets grant for two neighborhood pedestrian street improvements, namely Fremont and Sagone Streets, along with new speed feedback signs for Main Street and Sutton Ave. And today, I'm very pleased to announce that Oxford was one of only 16 communities chosen to receive funding in the amount of $224,000 to fund these priority projects. Our DPW Director attended the Executive Administration's formal announcement event last week in Taunton, but I wanted to remind this board, because we have some new members, that at one point, the Board of Selectmen in the very beginning phases had voted, particularly because it was interested in making our streets multimodal, that there was a vote to acknowledge that they would participate as fully as possible in the Complete Streets program. And if you look at what I put up here, the Complete Streets is one that provides safe and accessible options for all travel modes, walking, biking, transit, and vehicles for people of all ages and abilities. The reason why this is so crucial is the state is already doing this with all of the repairs and construction that they're doing. So, that part of it is, you know, happening, but this is not responding. Let me try a page now. No. So, just so that you know, that I did, when I first got here, when I came from another community that was much smaller, I had already done this entire grant myself, written it, and put in and had successfully garnered over $200,000 for construction of sidewalks that were very important to a million-dollar project. So, coming here, it was always a goal. Sean Duval was very, very busy. He always wanted to. There was a prioritization plan that was kind of done without the real input for Mass DOT, and it needed to be upgraded, and that has happened, and it happened under Jared Duval's watch. So, one of the things I was gonna say is, you can see down below, viewing the status, if you go on the Mass DOT website, you can click on to see how many towns actually have established by a vote of the board. And here, I've actually enlarged it, and I've circled now Oxford is in the orange, which is kind of apropos, you know, because those are the school colors, for an approved project. But you can see there were many other communities that had already advanced to that. But there's a lot of people who've gotten just the prioritization plan, including like a neighboring town of Sutton, but hadn't actually fully done the work that's required in order to qualify for a project. So, I want to thank Jared Duval. I think that I have received my share of input about the conditions of Fremont. And again, this is about neighborhood streets. We're gonna continue to tackle as many as possible. This was not necessarily something in the budget, so this goes into that column that you're wondering about in terms of checking off. And I will make sure that you know for every one of those things that we are able to do. So, I think this will be excellent, and I'm looking forward to it. The next is to let the board know and update you that on July 14, we had opened the bids for the Jocelyn Annex Demolition Project. When I first arrived here in town, we actually had tenants in that building, and that was not a good thing. So, the building itself was deemed not to be something that was fit for rental, and the building itself was in really, very severe shape. I've included some pictures here about how deteriorated it was. The town initially had appropriated about $57,000 for demolition, only to find out that once we did a hazardous materials review and tour, that that price went well up over $200,000. And so, we had bid ranges, and I put them in your packet just to show you a little bit of how we arrive at those kinds of things. The winning bid is for Pasquazi Brothers Incorporated. They bid for the lowest and best bid and most qualified for $235,000. We had gone back to the town in the amount of $250,000 that has been appropriated through the capital plan and through the DPW construction budget to get this done. So, when you look at the high bid was $472,000. The next bid was $280,000, so we were happy to get a bid of $235,000. So, this agreement that I also included in there, just for you to see, it will mean that the work should be done. We've asked them for the October 31, 2022 as a completion date, which means we expect that to happen. This is a long, outstanding project that will help us, I think, for the next phases, which I had updated the board previously about, and that is about, you know, doing a community, the community center feasibility study. So, I'll be happy when this building is gone. The next item is to let the board know that we did have a very successful auction for just two properties. We had a house that was in tax title on Coburg Ave., 36, I think is the number, and that sold for about 200, not 200, excuse me, $175,000 to the highest bidder. And then, we had a parcel on Southbridge Street which sold for $50,000. So, those now are two tax-paying properties that are back on the rolls. I assigned with our tax title attorney, Peter Brown, Zeke's Group, and our treasure collector, Jillian Patch, did a phenomenal job, and we're gonna be actually having another auction. This was a management goal, not a board goal, to look at our overall amount of taxes that were not actually coming into our coffers. And you don't want to have a high or significant amount of tax title. There are always gonna be some properties that you can never collect, and you might, the town doesn't necessarily want either to own or cannot or would not intervene because they might be responsible for something that a previous owner had. So, we have to look at each of these properties carefully, but you can substantially see the actual reduction based on the auction we had last year and the auctions we're gonna do this year. And it is another management goal I have with the treasure collector to stay on top of that before there would be many, many months, sometimes years, before some of that was enacted to identify and let owners know that they're gonna go into the tax title process. So, this is one way. We try to help not subsidize people who don't pay their taxes on time. The next item is to let everyone know that we have aquatic treatment. Our conservation agent, Judy Lochner, has informed my office that Carbonco Pond will be treated. It will be treated with an herbicide and an algae side this Wednesday, August 3. I guess there was something out on social media initially that said August 5. They have an event that's there. So, they worked with the company to make the modification. So, the actual beach in the pond itself will be closed to swimming, boating, fishing until the morning of Thursday, August 4. There will be signs posted all around the actual pond, and there are some additional restrictions relative to animal consumption, irrigation, or human use of pond water while it's being treated. But this is one of the things that, if you have questions, definitely call our Conservation Commission, and you can get the number on our webpage. The next item is to, just like we want to notify people when we have vacancies, I also like to notify people when we have opportunities to serve the community in unique ways. Election workers are a unique way to serve the community, and because of the upcoming state and federal elections and the new election law requirements, our town clerk has put out a notice seeking any interested residents who would like to serve as an election worker. If you are interested in doing so or know somebody, please let them contact the town clerk's office at 508-987-6032, option one. And there is remuneration for being an election worker because of the importance of the job and the position to the clerk's office, and our clerk and assistant clerk can answer any questions you have about what does it mean to be an election worker. The next item is just to let the board know, because I know I had announced our resignation of our long-term assessor. I am pleased to announce that the town does have a new assessor who will be joining our administrative team. Recently, Mr. Alex Zensick accepted the position as principal assessor and will be formally starting August 8. He most recently has served as assistant assessor for the Town of Westboro for five years, and prior to this, prior to his first day, he's already attending the Mass Association of Assessing Officers Annual Weekly Conference to be certified in valuation administration. Once he's settled in his role, he'll be making an appearance before the board as we prepare for the tax rate setting process going into the fall. I also want to point out that Alex actually has a lot of infield experience prior to even working for the Town of Westboro, and that is what gravitated him by our committee when we were actually evaluating him as a candidate. And this is a position that, if you go on the Mass Municipal Website, you will see it's very hard to recruit assessors right now. And I was very, you know, pleased that we were able to bring him on board. He's excited to work with the team that we have. Also, some of you may know that our assistant town manager, Jennifer Warren Diamond, has recently been offered an external position, I regretfully have to announce, to be the town administrator for the Town of West Boylston. She's worked for the town for three and a half years, supporting the Board of Selectmen and town manager's office, and was promoted last August to be assistant town manager. Together, I consider that we've accomplished much for the Town of Oxford, and now sadly, we must wish her a very best in her upcoming new role. I know that it's an excitement for her, but no matter when we have a team loss, it's always the shoes that we have to fill. So, I know we wish you all the best, and, you know, and I know you're looking forward to that. Aquarian Outside Water Ban. This is a critical drought. I know I've been announcing it, and I'm glad I have, because now Aquarian Water has contacted our office and contacted Jared Duval, particularly about irrigation. The state has now increased us in our entire region from a Level 2 to a Level 3, which means we're at critical drought alert status. What this means is that Aquarian has been informing us that they were going to send out notice to all of their customers, and that was going to be done through the communication from Operation Manager Paul Lawson from Aquarian, that they would, said to me that there's not necessarily an issue with the current supply of water, but it's the future supply that they're concerned with, and they're trying to comply with the state. So, they're issuing a mandatory nonessential water ban effective immediately to avoid future drought for drought-related shortages. This basically means for large-scale and small-scale lawn irrigations, field irrigation, sprinkler irrigations that are automatic, they want them to actually halt doing that all the way to September 30, where we're hoping for some rain. So, these are mandatory restrictions, and I told them that I would communicate that with the public as well.
May I ask a question on that?
Mm-hmm.
Does that include well systems or just through Aquarian?
Just, no, it's just through Aquarian right now, but I would say that I have been informing the public that anybody who has shallow wells, they should be monitoring those and maybe taking a look to see how low they are, and so that they can help prepare and figure out whether they're gonna need something that's supplemental. I know people with shallow wells, you know, you might all of a sudden start sucking up sediment, and then you know you're actually really shallow, and then you might be needing a whole new water filtration system if that happens. So, but I would, I've been actually announcing this purposefully to let people know that at some point, it's going to be affecting people. So, thank you for that reminder. The next thing is this. It's very exciting. So, Phil Davis from the Oxford Little League called me last week to inform me that the town has actually been selected to host the 2023 Oxford, not Oxford, the Little League State Championship Games. Now, this has been a goal, particularly for Phil Davis and many of the leadership for Oxford Little League, that this is not just welcoming news, it's something that has been long sought. The last time Oxford got to do this was 15 years ago, in 2007. These games typically take place the third week of July, and Oxford Little League is gonna be planning to host the games at the field next to the North Fire Station. This event typically draws hundreds of visitors, sometimes exceeding 1,000 visitors, and it will require a lot of planning and communication in the upcoming year. Anybody who's, you know, going to be interested in being able to support the organizational aspects of that, I would suggest they start early to contact the Little League, and we will work with them as well in any way that we can provide them with some support from the operations and the DPW and things like that. But I'll keep you. I mean, obviously, it's a long way out, but it's definitely very exciting. And not so exciting is to let the, ooh, something happened. Well, that's okay. I don't know what happened. That's it. Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I thought I had another slide. The other part of it is not as exciting, and that's that our Public Health Department has provided my office with an update on COVID case counts. And for the month of July, there has definitely been an increase in the number of new reported cases, which has averaged around 15 per week. And the only reason I'm putting this out there is, in looking at the monthly comparisons over the last three years, it does appear that the case count for this month will exceed last year's total of 21, and the prior 2020 total case count for July was only six. So, this increase is unusual for the summer, and it only serves to remind people that they really should continue to, you know, do social distancing, hand washing, and just symptom onset monitoring, you know, to avoid serious illness. And be mindful, we've had a number of cases, actually, for some of our employees, but those people who are taking care of sick people at home or have their own illnesses, we're just very mindful. And when we've had issues, we've gone back to mask-wearing when it makes sense to do that, to protect our employees. So, everyone just be cautious and just continue to do what you do, but just be mindful if you don't feel well to seek out any kind of assistance. And then finally, last week, the prior movies on Main, I just wanted you to know that Director of Public Health, our senior director who's sitting here, Laura Wilson, the community center director, Shelley Lambert, and I teamed up on handing out some canvas tote bags that are coming from the Regional Public Health Program, which contained everything from COVID testing kits, facial masks, sanitizer flyers on Onward Oxford Newsletter, election information, some magnets with important town phone numbers, and a couple movie treats, too. But the intent is to continue to reach out, and we had some other, obviously, flyers from our town clerk to become an election worker, the Scarecrows on Main, which is coming up. Everyone kind of contributed. We plan to try to do that as we go along, and I do want to report that this week's Disney feature is going to be Encanto and the movie trivia, and the food truck starts at 7:00 PM. It is really nice. The weather has totally cooperated. It's been nice to sit there and watch the movie and watch the kids have a lot of fun. And then the last is to let you know that the bandstand is going to be occupied twice this week. One, I don't know how they're gonna do it on Thursday, because it's gonna be 100 degrees, but holding back the band, they're gonna be holding back the sweat, I think, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. They're gonna be playing on the bandstand, and Sunday's Concert in the Park features Windfall from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. I know some people had told me that they heard Pink Floyd for some of the band songs that were going on this past weekend, and we've had just a great lineup of people. And tonight, I know I had announced to the board previously that the library was also doing a little bit of outdoor concerts, and they had the Highwayman over there and was playing some really good tunes before this meeting, and I was just sad that I couldn't watch the whole thing. But having said that, I'd conclude my manager's report by saying, everyone, please heed the warnings for heat on Thursday, and if anybody needs any assistance, particularly our elderly, just contact our senior center director, and we'll get you cool, and we'll try to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Second?
Second that motion.
I'll call for the vote, Amy?
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Five in the affirmative. Meeting adjourned. Thank you for coming. Have a safe trip home, Tom. Thanks, guys.